Good evening. And tonight is our regularly scheduled reorganization meeting, December 5th, 2016. The meeting is being videotaped for community cable channels. Individuals attending this meeting and intending to speak to the board should be aware they're being videotaped. Welcome to the meeting in North Penn School Board. Tonight is the 51st or annual reorganization. We are gonna have a pledge of allegiance led by Mr. D'Azio tonight.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Thank you. We're gonna hold our audience of citizens next. Before we do that, there is gonna be an agenda item that will be removed. Item number seven, the nomination to the North Monaco Technical Career Center Joint Operating Committee. We will postpone that till our action meeting next week, if everyone's okay with that.
Yes, sir.
Alright, it's now time for audience of citizens. Anybody wishing to speak to the board, please step forward, state your name and addresses.
My name is William Patchell. I've appeared here many times before, and I'm sure that most of the people on the board are well aware that I have certain topics which I like to bring before the board and to illuminate the public so that they can have an open dialogue and know what's going on, and should they desire to come forward and participate in this great experiment, which it is always an experiment because it is ongoing. Some things are working and some things are less so. But I have a information, and I've decided that I do have something that I wish I could say. It'd be Operation Scar and Tar. Now, that really means simply confuse all residents and tax all residents. So how much is our new Director of Building Operations making? What did happen to make you offer the new salary? Was it... Maybe somebody would care to answer that?
Is that the only question you got?
No. No, this is just... I have three items which I would like to discuss. My first thing, because Mr. ...I forgot the gentleman's name, but he did quite an excellent job, and I believe he was making between 100 and 135K. And I was just wondering, Mr. DiSazio, in a casual conversation, I said, "Well, what are we paying him? Are we paying what Tom made?" "Oh, no, we had to pay him more money." I said, "More money? Gee, I hope that the Yankees don't have to hire the new guy at A-Rod salary. You know, that would be pretty tough on the team." So, you know, I like to have performance. I don't care where you've been. Performance is what you do on our team. And I think that starting out, it would be fair to assume that you get a trial period if you're gonna give a guy a salary or whatever. That's...I'm sure that the resume was fantastic and was on the short list, but maybe you could tell the public how much the salary of the new building, the building operations... But what do you call that position? I'd like to get it correct.
I believe it's Director of Facilities.
Director of Facilities.
Director of Facilities and Operations.
Okay. And what was his salary? Just before he departed on a yearly basis?
Uh, we can look it up, hold on.
Yeah?
I do. Would I permit you to respond?
Sure.
$133,792.
It's amazing. You know, I was very close, and I didn't really look at it, but, you know, the price is right. You know, I would've won the prize. But anyway, now, the new person that's been hired after extensive, you know, due diligence, how much is the new Director of Operations making so that the public could be well aware of, you know, what we'll have to pay?
Mr. Kennedy replaced Mr. Schneider, and he was approved at the last board meeting at $147,746.
You know what? I hope the public takes notice of that $147,000. That's a pretty large jump for somebody that really hasn't been tried yet. It's kinda like the Phillies hiring a guy. He hit good last year. Oh, and the guy's terrible this year. So I, you know... But I'm sure that he has characteristics in his professional resume, and Mr. DiSazio said that he is an architect, and he is quite qualified, that we could actually separate ourselves from our architectural fees, that we could all do this in-house, and I expect that to happen. Okay. He said, "I'm sure that Mr. Schneider was very happy to leave to go to Abington School District." Thank goodness I don't live in Abington School District, 'cause I tell you, the taxes in Abington School District, they're pretty horrific. And you know what? It's amazing, they sell houses there. They are not as prudent as we are, so, you know, I'm sure that they have lots and lots of money to pay Tom a nice raise, even though the poor put-up taxpayers, they're, "Oh, boy, this is really sick." You know, but, you know, it'll be like the meetings in Abington, like here, we got four people, okay? So I'm glad that I don't live in Abington. Some of our security force with overtime and a little extra money for coaching sure looks good when you're retired at 55, living in Florida and looking for those trophy fish. Boy, that is great. I'm sure the taxpayers are not retiring at 55. This is what happens when you have a dysfunctional labor contract. And I'm telling you, there's many, many people at, I think they call them military occupational specialties. Well, everybody at the same occupational specialty, if it's the Air Force, the Coast Guard, the Army, or whatever, they're all making the same money. It isn't this dysfunctional thing, gee, how do you pick those numbers out? Oh, yeah, I just get them off the top of my head to attract good people. I don't think that's really what... It's a bad precedent when the school district were a governmental body, and this is what this last election was all about. The public is getting sick and tired of the government taking the lead on salaries and, gee, private enterprise? Gee, I'm gonna have to move out of the country. Oh, no, I can't move out now, 'cause the guy said he's gonna tax me to death. So there is no resolution to that problem, but I'm waiting to see how it happens on January 20th, and we'll all be happy when we see what the real program's gonna be. Then we had the school bus accident in Texas. I talked to the assistant for Dr. Dietrich this morning, 'cause I was quite concerned. Oh, here's a woman. Oh, yeah, they were coming home from the finals, and this is in IRAAN, Texas. And I don't know if she was qualified to drive a shorty bus or not. The accident happened at 12 o'clock midnight. Boy, well, she got killed, and there were some too serious injuries. So, you know, how did that happen? My feeling is a teacher driving a cheerleader from a playoff game at midnight, the question I asked was, was she even qualified to drive a bus, or did she just jump in there and say, "Boy, I bet they'll have litigation that you can't stop"? I'm sure that solicitor's gonna have plenty of work to do when those parents of those injured children start saying, "Who? What? How much? How big would you like the jack?"" And that's the way it's gonna work. Just like you said, "Oh, the subject of litigation during the meeting, blah, blah, blah." I've heard that a ton of times before. You know, the...okay. With things coming up, and I have the paper here, and we were talking about, and I know these parents are very concerned about the air conditioning. Wow, look at this. Public debating tax increases. I'm so glad I get the reporter. I buy it just because of the coverage for the school district. I'm really...yes. Yes, like I said, I am so happy. I got 13 weeks, I'm gonna see how it plays out. Now, I want you to listen to this. Montgomery County Community College, $4 million over, and $66 annual increase property taxes. Montgomery County property, $169,000. I'm sure many people have houses that are more than that, with the current average tax bill is $584. Okay, now we're gonna do the $3.2 million for the air conditioning, okay? And I got a few more things. And then I heard a thing on the public radio tonight about, oh, friendly turf or something? Oh, yeah, the UV rays. Yeah, it eats that AstroTurf right up. And, you know, the only last eight years, you know, the company never really told anybody this stuff has fallen apart, and they have lots and lots and lots of school districts. What do we do? Oh, I can't believe that happened. Wouldn't have made NPR if somebody didn't think something was fishy. Going back to the bus accident, I'm really sorry that whatever happens to...on the accident, it doesn't end this matter. I keep telling you about potential litigation. It's gonna happen. I hate to stand up and go, "Gee, I told you about that. Why are we going to these things? Who drove the bus over there to the thing on Saturday, even though we lost? It was a great game." But you know what? My feeling is, and I told Dr. Dietrich, we're not taking anybody past this district, and if you wanna get there, you're on the team, tell your mom and dad and give Little Billy a ride, because we're not gonna do it anymore. You got how many players? 120? I'm sure mom and dad would be loved to get to that game, and you know what? They'll be there, I guarantee it. If Little Billy doesn't make it, he should've got the number of a few friends and they give him a ride. We're not gonna go and get litigated for millions and millions and millions of dollars, because I'll tell you about the litigation in law schools. Okay. Okay, and the final thing I wanna bring your attention, lastly, the silly step wage nonsense. It's ridiculous. 15 steps? There's going to be cost if 800 or 1,000 kids use their new federal vouchers to jump ship. What are we gonna do? Man, they all left. I don't know how. And I guarantee it, the new Secretary of Education, she loves vouchers. I guarantee you, she loves vouchers, okay? And if you go to...a lot of people, the AP students, because they're doing fantastic, it's the bottom group that they have to worry about, and if you go to schooldigger.com, which I go to occasionally, says, "We are in the lower 50% in the Commonwealth for the district." Not the top, not the five, six in the APs. We're at the bottom. Schooldigger.com, check it out, okay? For every 30 National Murrett Scholarship winners you had, you got 100 at the lower end, and you know where they're gonna go? They're gonna go up to Sotterton to that charter school, rated number one by schooldigger.com. How did that happen? I don't know. Thank you very much.
For our tax dollars. He guys sound like an apple with our tax dollars. Thank you, Mr. Patchell.
Thank you.
That was quite a diet, right?
Yeah, tiring.
You should be aware that, as you talked about Mr. Kennedy coming here and the previous two people that we both had, both left this district for making more than $35,000 more than they were paid.
I don't...
I know you may be offended by such things like that, because you're in a workforce in a different time and a different place, but these people demand quite a few dollars because they run 4 million square feet of buildings.
I have no compassion for anybody that taxpayers don't have any compassion, and why do you think Mr. Trump won? Because they're sick and tired of it. Sick and tired of it.
Well, thank you, Bill, for your input. Alright, let's move forward with our agenda. Roll call first.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. O'Donnell?
Here.
Mrs. Bukowski?
Here.
Mr. Schilling?
Here.
Mr. Kerr?
Here.
Mrs. Leonard?
Here.
Mrs. Murphy?
Present.
Mr. D'Azio?
Here.
Mrs. Charnock?
Here.
Mr. Shapinski?
Present.
Nine present.
Thank you. I'll take...I'll open the floor for nominations for pro temp president. As of Section 402, the public school code has amended. I'll nominate Mr. Schilling. Any other nominations?
I was gonna nominate Frank.
He can't hear.
He can't hear. That's trouble. He can't hear all the time. Move to close nominations. Alright, move to close nominations. All those in favor of closing nominations, say aye.
Aye.
All those in favor of Mr. Schilling, serve. Say aye.
Very good.
Yeah, here, you want to gamble for a minute?
Yeah.
Sure?
Alright, election of president.
Microphone.
Turn your microphone over.
Thank you.
Election for president for one-year term. I'd like to open up the nominations.
Here.
Okay, I gotta...I don't...I don't have to have a vote of nomination, do I?
Instead of have somebody who needs nomination.
What's that?
Simply accept nominations.
Okay.
Not a motion, it does not need a second.
Alright, yes. What's your nomination, ma'am?
I'm going to nominate Susan for president.
Okay.
And I wanna just give a little bit. She's been on the board for six years, and I just feel like that we've had very good leadership here. The health of the school district is obvious, that we've had the leadership in this district on both sides, both administrative and the board. But I just think sometimes it's time to have variety, and I just, in my entire life, I've always felt that variety is important in making decisions. So I know that she's been very loyal for the last six years. She has a lot of experience also in family law, as well as in the ECP. So I put her name in for nomination.
Alright, thank you. Anyone else?
Nominate Mr. Shapinski.
Okay. Anyone else? Move the closed nomination.
Move the closed nomination.
All favorited?
Aye.
Any votes? Alright, so roll call.
Do we get to make a comment, or...
No.
No?
No.
Okay.
Okay, this is roll call for the two nominations that are before you, for president, Mrs. Leonard and Mr. Shapinski. Okay, we'll start with Mr. D'Azio.
Mr. Shapinski.
Mr. Schilling?
Mr. Shapinski.
Mrs. Charnock?
Mr. Shapinski.
Mrs. Leonard?
Mrs. Leonard.
Mrs. Murphy?
Mrs. Leonard.
Mrs. Bukowski?
Mr. Shapinski.
Mr. Kerr?
Mr. Shapinski.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Mr. Shapinski.
Mr. Shapinski?
Mr. Shapinski.
Mr. Shapinski, seven votes, Mrs. Leonard, two votes.
Thank you. I'll assume the presidency again for one term, and I'd like to open the floor for the election of a vice president for a one-year term under Section 404 of the public school code as amended. Do we have any nominations?
Yeah, I'll nominate Josie Charnock.
Mrs. Charnock is placed in the nomination. Any other nominations tonight?
Close nominations.
Move to close nominations. Second, and all those in favor of closing nominations, say aye.
Aye.
Closed. Let's go through...you win by default, but we'll do a roll call anyway. Roll call, please.
Okay, this roll call is for vice president. There's one candidate, Mrs. Charnock. So we'll start with Mr. Schilling.
Mrs. Charnock.
Mrs. Charnock?
Mrs. Charnock.
Mrs. Leonard?
Mrs. Charnock.
Mrs. Murphy?
Mrs. Charnock.
Mr. D'Azio?
Mrs. Charnock.
Mr. Kerr?
Mrs. Charnock.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Mrs. Charnock.
Mrs. Bukowski?
Mrs. Charnock.
Mr. Shapinski?
Josephine Charnock.
Mrs. Charnock has nine votes, and there's no opposition.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is the recommended approval of the 2017 schedule of meetings per BA 2-A through B. Motion by Mr. Schilling, second by Mrs. Charnock. Comments or questions?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell first, if you want. Go ahead.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Someone else? Not knowing the makeup of the committee, there may be a change either in time or moving it up instead of behind support services. It may be moved up to the Monday before. That's in question right now. I think it really depends on once the committee assignments are put out. That's all. So I'd like to say the committee at the moment would be on hold until the committee meets for the first time, who's ever on that committee, when they meet for the first time, then they can vote, and then we could advertise accordingly.
So you're making a motion to amend the approval of the schedule of meetings, BA 2-A through B, am I right? Is that what you just did?
Yes.
Well, first one needs a second. Does anybody else wanna do that?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Can't they just, when they meet, can't they go back and change it?
Yeah, it can be changed at the board committee, as long as they come back here and we advertise it.
Wouldn't that be a better idea, doing it that way? That way, if it remained the same, they wouldn't have to go back to the board. I'm just...I'm not disagreeing with Frank.
I think the committees have a right to change their schedule. They don't interfere with any other commitments. Board members have, as far as the votes act or the IU or whatever other committee.
And that means we just approve it as is.
Yeah.
First meeting is what you just said, first meeting, and you figure out if you wanna change it.
Okay, that's the way it's always worked.
You understand Frank? I'm...because I somebody can't hear. You over saying? And you're alright?
I'm fine. Okay. Do you wanna withdraw that motion? Fred let the motion pass away with Fred.
I mean, I have no problem doing what Frank wants, I'm just saying I just...
You know, it affects the one half a dozen of the other. I just try to do something right.
Okay, I'll second it. I'll second his motion. I'll second his motion. I don't wanna offend him. I'll second his motion.
Wait a minute, let's make sure.
I'll second Frank's motion. I didn't mean to upset him. I second his motion.
I was told the motion.
So we have...hold on, guys, let me make sure I understand what you're trying to do. Frank has requested that the recommended approval of the 2017 schedule of meetings per item BA 2-A through B. One item on that schedule will be the removal of the finance committee. That's what he's asking.
The removal of that?
Yeah, the finance committee schedule, because it's...Frank wants the way until the committee gets together, until they're appointed. But then they have to advertise the public meeting to have the change in the meetings. Am I right, Mr. Solicitor?
Correct. I mean, the real purpose of this, of this motion and adoption, to my mind, was always for advertising purposes.
Right, understand.
Because one advertisement can then go out in accordance with law, giving public notice of all your meetings. That never prevents either the board or the committee from changing those.
And that's what I was...
But when there's a change, there needs to be an additional advertisement. It happens all the time.
Right.
An ad needs to be at least 24 hours before that meeting. But things change, but this enables the administration to get that ad out that now covers us for all these meetings, and additional advertisements don't need to run as a result each year for each one of these meetings. That's what this accomplishes. So changes can always be made.
Frank? And I just didn't wanna...I was afraid that the first meeting, he might have a problem. That's all. I mean, I have no problem.
Have a motion on the floor.
You want it? I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor of removing the finance committee from the rule of schedules of meetings, say aye.
Time.
Time.
Don't we need to go around for questions?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Before the motion was made?
Not before the motion. The discussion follows.
Okay, so when you first mentioned it, didn't you say, "Any questions?", and go to him first?
Yes, I did. You're right.
So what's wrong? What...
I'm sorry, I didn't understand that. I didn't follow through. I should've just went back to you and said, "Go ahead, you want to ask Frank a question about..." He was trying to make a motion to her, or you have something?
Not on Frank, but I wasn't ready for the motion either.
Well, man, not was I. But go ahead. Why don't you offer your opinion on the approval of schedules?
It's the committee, the way we do the committees. Is it ever better? I think it might be better to meet a committee of the whole.
As compared to what?
As compared to what we do now.
Well, the committee of the whole, the full board, has to approve all the committee assignments.
Of course.
Is that what you mean?
No, the discussion on...in order for me to be up to date with everything, I gotta go to that meeting and that meeting and that meeting, and then back to that meeting. Can't we just do it one night?
Well, you wait a minute. You have access to all the information from each committee. If you wanna find out what we're thinking, yeah, you would have to either call them or attend the meeting to find out what they're thinking.
And find out what goes on at the meeting. I mean, and you can't...
You have an agenda. You have all the documentation at a board address.
You don't always get to tender at the meeting from reading the minutes of a meeting, and I agree that the committee system...
You have full access to every information.
It's not the same thing. It's not the same thing as attending the meeting. Of course, you have full access.
You still gotta go to a word of...
I understand Terry's point, and I gotta tell you, I can envision, since I was the guy who invented the committee structure when I came here in 1997, I can tell you exactly what was done. We had committee meetings of the full board lasting until 1:00 and 2:00 in the morning.
Yeah, I know.
The public would leave at 9:00 or 10:00, and then we would still be here three or four more hours longer.
That's true.
And they were around back then for some of those fabulous meetings.
Right.
And if I remember right, the emphasis for the change, when I came, I suggested doing a committee structure and having people who had a specialized knowledge or interest in a particular subject work at the committee level. But I also said, "All information from each committee must be shared with the full board and each member," and that's the way we set it up, and that's the way it's done. But I agree with you on the point that if I wanna know what Frank is thinking or Johnny's thinking versus Susan is profound, I have to come to the meeting and listen to what you guys have to say about a particular topic, because I don't get that unless I go to the meeting. But I don't really think that's relevant. I mean, I have all the information that they have, too.
And what's nice about it is people come to the committee meetings, you know, who do come, don't have to...whereas the old system, as you well know, you were under that system.
You'd have to stay until 1:00 in the morning.
Used to go to 10:00, 11:00 at night, people would leave. They would have no interest.
Or worse, they'd stay until 1:30 in the morning to hear their subject along.
That is not a bad social...
Yeah, Terry, I agree with what Ben says.
Those two meetings.
I read the agenda, I read the minutes. For example, I'm more suited...I'm an accountant, I'm more suited towards finance.
Why?
I read his agenda. agenda. When I see if it's nothing but chain orders, I may skip the meeting. A chain order is a chain order. ECP is new books, new courses. Not much changes, the scores, you know, it's pretty much the same. So for me to have to sit for four hours or five hours just wouldn't make, for me, that wouldn't make.
But it wouldn't be that long if we did the system a little differently and had an agenda for, if we meet, we all meet three nights a month at least, right, or four, maybe five, depending on our meetings. And so if we had three board meetings and one was designated as a work session meeting and one was designated as ECP and finance and the other one was designated for Support Services, we could do it in three meetings and...
We already have that. Yeah. What is the problem? It's exactly what we have already. Now the question is... Somebody's trying to come in. Why we want to change this. But we're just going to have, everybody's going to now, I mean, we're volunteers. So we're going to come, everyone's expected to come to all these different committee meetings. I mean, I've been doing this for 15 years. I don't have a problem with the way the committee structure works. I don't know why all of a sudden...
I'm not sure what's broken. What's broken?
I don't, I don't know. Vote, tell them votes.
I asked a question.
And you open that, that pops up. I mean, I can only tell you from history what I experienced. I know when I was a person in the audience and I had to stay till 1:00 in the morning and then the board would parade for an executive session.
That's right.
At 1:30 in the morning.
It's true.
Sitting in the room for an hour before they come back. I mean, that was ridiculous.
You've refreshed my memory.
I know.
But that's not even, I mean, the point in my, I guess the question I have is why?
Why are we changing? But it's not... The committee structure gave us the ability to specialize, use specialized knowledge, specialized interests, hone in with specialized administrators who have expertise in the areas that each one of these committees cover. And we get a much broader, you know, experience out of that. I mean, we get a better product all the time. And they still, all those actually still have to come to the full board.
I withdraw my question.
Oh, no, I'm just trying to make it so like what you asked about.
I thought it was a good question.
Change my view.
So, all right, so we still have a motion with the removal of the Finance Committee, but the Finance Committee cannot meet, Frank, unless they have an advertised meeting.
Frank, listen to Vince.
We have to have at least one.
I'm trying to...
The Finance Committee cannot meet until they advertise a meeting.
Vince, with all due respect, there's a motion in a second. Let's just vote on it.
All right, fair enough. All those in favor of removing Finance from the Schedule of Meetings, say aye.
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 All those opposed, say no. Roll call.
Yeah.
So the motion in second was to remove Finance from the list of scheduled meetings. And so you're going to vote yes, you are concurring with removing...
Will you please stop? We're conducting a meeting here, Mr. Pachul. Roll call, please, over the motion.
Okay, so again, an affirmative vote indicates removal of Finance from the committee meetings. Okay, Mrs. Charnock?
Can I just make a comment? Because this kind of came up because I had asked about it because it was right after Support Services meeting and it was delayed. But I still feel like we should have that first meeting, so I'm going to vote no.
I'm sorry, you button?
No. Just to have that, at least that first meeting and then we can...
Okay, all right, then. I know you're in the roll call.
No, no, just, yes, let's just go with your throat.
No.
Mrs. Leonard?
No.
Mrs. Murphy?
No.
Mr. Diazio?
No.
Mr. Kerr?
No.
Mr. O'Donnell?
I'll say yes because I, it's on the floor.
Mrs. Prokowsky?
No.
Mr. Schilling?
No.
Mr. Shapinski?
No.
Motion is defeated eight to one.
I go back to my original motion, recommend approval of the 2017 Schedule of Meetings per item BA 2-A through B. Motion by Mrs. Prokowsky, second by Mr. Diazio was the second to that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is approved. Number eight on our agenda is recommend authorization for the administration to work with your petrol, pharma, and associates for the design, specification development, and advertising for the bid for the air conditioning installation unit ventilator option at Oak Park Elementary, Nap Elementary, and Buynore Elementary. Funding for the project shall come from the Capital Reserve Fund per item 105-16.
It's not moved.
Motion by Mr. O'Donnell.
Second.
Second by Mr. Diazio. Any discussion?
I, yeah, I just want to make a comment. So when we say funding for the project will come out of the Capital Reserve, that's a one-time cash amount, correct? It's not going to be funded through a bond or anything of that nature. Okay.
It may not be one bond, but it'll come out of a different fund and not the bond fund. Because I understand, I mean, we have other money coming back from $300,000 over four years. I mean, there's... Yeah, I think it was like a one... Mr. Schilling's point was we're going to pay cash for the air conditioning.
They'll pay cash.
Residents in North Penn. Okay, any other comments to this issue? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So approved. Motion to adjourn this long meeting?